I'm going to go ahead and call this evening's city council meeting for March 20th to order. Please note that all the council members are present. Please join me to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent calendar. Please note that item E does include a correction, a typo. So this will be a consent calendar as amended on E.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent calendar as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye on items A through D. I refuse myself on item E.
So you're approving items A through D and recusing on E?
Yes.
All right.
And to add to the record, I believe Councilmember Pierce, that's because you're a board member of the Historical Society? Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Pierce, recuse yourself just from the item dealing with the museum. She's a board member. All right. Next would be any recognitions and presentations or are none moving to reports? No planning commission, no trails and landscape, city manager report, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm still writing notes. Couple of items, first off, to let you as well as the public know that our city organization, which does not have a lot of numbers to it, we actually have two vacancies now. We invite people to go onto our website to take a look at whether they're interested in those. The first one is a senior maintenance or a senior maintenance worker, lead worker type individual. Primarily will work out in the field. And then secondly, we have a-
You get to ride a tractor?
Well, um, yeah, actually, you know, a modern tractor.
You've got to build it up, Gary, come on.
Not one of those that are over in the museum area or soon to be. The second position is an office assistant slash code enforcement officer, works on third floor, handles public counter traffic, business licenses, also does our code, you know, enforcement out in the field. So both of those will be closing on April 13th. The applications are available on the city website. Any questions people have regarding those positions can be fielded by our HR manager Janet Brown here. Along the same lines, we put on the back table, but I know the council has, is aware of it. We had, there are a number of volunteer representative positions that are available for people, such as the county library commission representing Clayton. We once again invite people to take a look at the city website to see if they have any interest in that. And then the third item of interest is, the city council is aware, but on April 4th, in conjunction with the prospective developer that the city has selected for the downtown property, that developer Fulcrum will be holding a community meeting in this room on April 4th. That's a Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. The developer and our community development director will be in the room as well as our real estate commercial agent to present to the public their vision, including site plan and elevations for that development. That's a senior care facility that's being proposed that has a combination of memory care as well as senior assisted living facility. So there's less parking that would be involved with that type of use. So we invite individuals who are interested or not, if they have a Wednesday night open, that's April 4th, 7:00 PM. Here in Hoyer Hall, the public is invited. Those who are specifically uninvited are members of the city council and members of the Clayton Planning Commission, as those individuals will be involved in the decision-making process. So while there may be curiosity, we invite those five and 10 individuals not to show up because you might, you know, find yourself to, you know, be recused for comments or biases down the road. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now for council reports, Councilmember Catalano.
So I don't have any events to report, but I do want to make two quick announcements, CPCA, community-related announcements. So first announcement is regarding their scholarship program. So that is still open for the next two weeks. So if there are any Clayton residents who are high school seniors, graduating high school seniors, there's still two more weeks until April 2nd to file and fill out a scholarship request. Information is going to be at the claytoncbca.org website. And the other announcement is similarly on CBCA items. The Art and Wine Festival is coming up on April 28th and 29th. There are lots of volunteers that they will be looking for. If anybody's interested in volunteer shift, the volunteer signup form is also at the claytoncbca.org website. And that's it.
Thank you. Rashmira Shuey, nothing to report. Councilmember Pierce.
Yes, I had six Metropolitan Transportation Commission meetings, four Association Bay Area Government meetings, one meeting of the Transpac Group, which is our Central County Transportation Advisory Committee. And we had a joint Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Association Bay Area Governments legislative trip to Washington DC last week. We flew out on Sunday and met with committee staff and staff members on Monday and then some of our representatives on Tuesday with a reception, got to speak with our congressman DeSonia while we were there and several other, our other representatives. It was a joint trip between MTC, ABAG, and coordinated with the National League of Cities meeting. So we had several receptions that were in common and co-sponsored. It was, I think, a productive trip if what somewhat frustrating, given the tenor of what's not happening back there. Also had last week, after I got back from that, we had a California Council of Governments Association meeting in Monterey. It's our annual meeting, very, very informative, primarily talking about SB 1 and how much that's needed and how far that goes. So that's going to be important going forward. So that was my week, or two weeks.
Thank you. Busy, busy. Councilmember Diaz.
The only thing that's external of council and business is that I am the chair of the Art and Wine Festival coming up on the 28th, 29th, and it's going to be a very spectacular event. End of report.
Thank you, yes, you will be busy from here on out.
Have been since then.
Yes. Okay, I did attend on the 7th, the County Connection Administrative and Finance Committee meeting. Then on the 8th, had the pleasure of attending the Black Diamond Mine Stairwell Opening Ceremony. They have opened up a new section of the mine by putting in a brand-new stairwell deep into the mine that is going to allow access further into the mine and much safer as well. So I encourage the public to go out and take advantage of the tours that are offered there. It's very interesting now, but it does show all the activity that occurred in the mine when they were in the sand section of the mine. What they're going to be doing is improving the exhibit area to add a section that is going to represent what it looked like when the section of the Black Diamond Mine area was being mined for coal, which was the first mining mineral that they were after. When they, most of the activity occurred over there and generated some activity across the hill into Clayton as well. So that's going to be completed, they hope, in this fall. And that should be a really interesting exhibit to show particularly the school kids that come through on tours what the mines look like when the coal was being mined there. And then next, attended on the 15th, the County Connection Board Meeting, where we approved some new route changes to make sure that all the areas in the route area are represented. And also of note, at that meeting, Jim Diaz, our council member who used to serve on that board, was also recognized for his service. So that was a nice gesture. And then this morning, I was able to participate in the Meals on Wheels Community Champions Ride Along Event, where they invited a number of local elected officials to accompany drivers as they actually went out and delivered meals to the needy that were in the area and enrolled in the program. And this delivers five meals a week, one a day, to the needy residents in our area. And it was very satisfying to see these people being served. They were very appreciative and the volunteer efforts were also appreciated. So that was a nice program to see and just reinforces the value of programs like that in our community. All right. Next up then will be public comment, and this is for non-agenda items. The agenda items will have public comment period themselves. So I do have a speaker's card, Ann Stanaway, for this item.
I'm Ann Stanaway. I live at 1553 Haviland Place in Clayton. Tonight, I'd like to concentrate on ethical protocol. Councilman Shuey advertises that he concentrates and is licensed by the state of California to practice law in the areas of insurance defense, injury matters, professional negligence, and governmental entity defense. Yet, as vice mayor, he exposes the city of Clayton to unconscionable liability by making intemperate remarks at city council meetings. Public safety is not quote-unquote "poppycock", nor are regulations involving duty of care and responsibility for public safety, especially those evolved in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, adopted solely to benefit industry and line the pockets of trial lawyers. Interesting, it took decades, September 19, 2017, to be exact, before city council adopted a resolution to make the entrance to city hall handicapped accessible. Could this be due to an underlying attitude of a city dismissive of the ADA? Certainly any freshman litigation attorney could parlay Councilman Shuey's remarks and the city's record of non-compliance with the ADA into serious litigation against Clayton. Perhaps Councilman Shuey in particular and the council in general would benefit from a review of scholarly publications on fiduciary duty of public officials. I can recommend those published through Councilman Shuey's alma mater, Santa Clara University, specifically at the university's Markula Center for Applied Ethics. Councilman Shuey, at the last session, you asked the question, is anyone complaining? I've been complaining since 2007 about non-compliance with ADA regs and the city's tepid attitude toward public safety in general. I'm complaining, but no one's listening. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speaker cards. Anyone else want to address the council on non-agenda items? All right, we will move into public hearing then. Item 7A, public hearing to consider the introduction and first reading of a proposed city initiated ordinance number 481, amending chapter 8.14 Regulation of Smoking of the Clayton Municipal Code. We have a presentation this evening from our community development director, Mindy Gentry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This item on the agenda this evening is the consideration of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the city's smoking regulations. During the city council's consideration of the regulation of commercial cannabis uses, the city council directed staff to bring back an update to the city's smoking ordinance in order to more thoroughly address the smoking and ingesting of cannabis. While examining the city's current smoking ordinance, staff determined more wholesale changes would be necessary and desirable because the ordinance hadn't been updated since 1993. On February 20th, 2018, the city council discussed and provided a direction to staff regarding the appropriate amendments to the municipal code, which are reflected in the proposed ordinance that is before the council this evening. So let's get into the specifics of what the ordinance entails. State law prevents the smoking and consumption of cannabis in a public place. However, the state failed and did not really provide a clear definition. Therefore, staff is recommending establishing a local definition. This definition would be, a public place would be in any area, whether publicly or privately owned, to which the public has access by right or by invitation, express or implied, whether by payment of money or not, and regardless of any age requirement. Public place in this instance would not include tobacco shops or private smokers' lounges. As far as it pertains to city facilities, smoking would be prohibited in all city buildings, vehicles, property, parks, trails, open space, the corporation yard, and all other enclosed and unenclosed areas operated by the city. So more specifically about the expansion of the prohibition of smoking, the proposed ordinance would provide more stringent regulations than allowed for under state law. All enclosed places of employment that are currently exempt from state law, such as patient smoking areas and long-term healthcare facilities and/or theatrical production sites, these would all be prohibited under the city's proposed ordinance, except for tobacco shops with a smoking lounge. However, these tobacco shops would have to meet certain criteria, such as no one under the age of 21 would be allowed to be in the facility. No consumption or the sale of food and drink could occur on site, and the shop would have to be in a freestanding building. Other proposed smoking would be, that would be prohibited, would include enclosed public places, both enclosed and unenclosed service areas. A service area would be an area where you're waiting in line, such as to use the ATM or to buy tickets, that type of area. And the following unenclosed areas would also be prohibited, which would be dining areas, recreational areas, and public events, such as the Fourth of July Parade and Oktoberfest. And also within 25 feet of the Grove Park. And I put together a slide showing kind of what that 25-foot buffer around the Grove Park would look like. So roughly, it's the center line of Main Street, Center Street, and Marsh Creek Road, and approximately about halfway through the parking lot of, and the building of Village Market. So as it pertains to multifamily housing uses, due to smoke migrating from neighboring apartments and condominiums through cracks in shared walls, vents, and open windows involuntarily subjecting others to secondhand smoke, these proposed regulations would prohibit smoking in all multifamily common areas, both enclosed and unenclosed, as well as inside these housing units. The HOA or management company would be able to designate an outdoor smoking area that is appropriately signed and marked, as well as away from children. Also proposed is to prohibit smoking inside of these multifamily units, including unenclosed balconies, porches, decks, patios, garages, and carports. Upon adoption, these regulations would take immediate effect for any new housing units, but would be phased in for the existing units by May 1st, 2019. Landlords would also be required to disclose these smoking regulations in lease and/or rental agreements. So as it pertains to cannabis, currently state law prohibits the smoking of cannabis. Anywhere smoking tobacco is prohibited. And the ordinance then also specifies the smoking of cannabis is prohibited on all city property that's owned or leased, including parks, open space, trails, also within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center, and in or upon the grounds of a school, daycare, or youth center, and also while driving or riding in a vehicle, boat, vessel, or aircraft. And lastly, the ingesting of cannabis is also prohibited in any other place. So the enforcement of this ordinance would be by the Clayton Police Department. However, a member of the public can bring a civil action in any court, and upon demonstration of the proof of the violations do exist, the court shall grant the appropriate relief, including damages or an injunction. I'd like to note that the city did receive a letter of support of the ordinance from the Contra Costa Tobacco Prevention Coalition, which is also comprised of 30 organizations and individuals within the county. And lastly, staff is recommending a few language tweaks to the ordinance that were different than what was provided to the council in their packets. The first change would be the replacement of a recital in order to clarify federal prohibitions on cannabis and concerns regarding secondhand smoke from cannabis uses. Secondly, clarifying that a mobile home and a mobile home park is not considered to be a multi-unit residence. Thirdly, the requiring, the application notification requirements apply to both rental and homeownership and require the notification of the associated penalties. Lastly, a language change that will allow for modifications or changes to state law, excuse me, in regards to how penalties for violation, violating this section of the municipal code will be applied. For example, the state law for cannabis currently only allows violations to be infractions and not on the level of misdemeanors. So that would be a distinction that would be within the proposed ordinance. And with that, that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions to staff? Yes?
I noticed that in your report, you, in your verbal report, you specifically mentioned the, among things, the Oktoberfest and the Art and Wine Festival. And then I need a little clarification on the 25-foot boundary around the Grove Park. Specifically, when we have our concerts, a number of people do smoke. I'm afraid they're within the 25-foot limit because they gather around that tree that's right near the parking area. You know, no, I've got that, I understand. So what you're saying is it's actually the 25 feet extends into the center of the street of Main Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Where would we direct these people to go smoke?
They could go across the street, and just as long as they're out of the 25-foot buffer. The impetus of this was state law prevents the smoking within 25 feet of a totlot or playground. And in this particular case, there's an exemption under state law that does not, that allows for smoking on a public sidewalk. So somebody could conceivably be smoking right here adjacent to the totlot, and they'd still be-
Yeah, no, but I'm speaking on Main Street. But okay, I understand, there's, a few people do step out into the street there on Center Street.
So I mean, they could conceivably go down to, you know, this particular area on the corner, you know, or, you know, further up over, you know, in this particular area. They'd have to just go, you know, a few feet further than, I believe this is the tree you're referring to?
No.
No?
No, it's halfway down Main Street, right under the word ramp.
Right there.
I guess where I'm leading to is, because this is going to be an issue during the concerts, should we designate a smoking area and if so prominently identify that? So we can direct people over there? Because that's going to be an issue. I mean, there's at least half a dozen or more people that smoke in that area.
I mean, that would be something that we would have to look into, you know. If we were to designate it, it'd have to be on city property and not on private property and, you know, obviously away from, you know, the playground area.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I have a couple.
Councilmember Catalano?
So on the, sort of the multi, multi-unit developments and then the lease provisions, I understand the, sort of the notifications in the leases, that's just good notification clause, I get that. But then when we get to the, sort of, there's an exception that, you know, and the way it reads right now is that landlord would be allowed to designate a portion of the unenclosed common area where you could smoke. I'm wondering sort of why it would be the landlord and specifically, we don't have a lot of, I don't know that we have any really developments where you have multiple units, where you have a sort of a common landlord. I think typical landlord scenarios are private property owners who are renting their property. So I'm sort of wondering why the landlord would necessarily have the authority to designate a common area? Why it wouldn't be HOA or management company or something like that?
That would be something we could definitely incorporate into the language to clarify that it's, you know, the management company or an HOA in addition to the landlord.
Okay, but what I think the intent here is that we'll have, we have somebody who's able to designate a some area somewhere.
The most appropriate person.
Right, okay. And then my other question is, and I'm sorry, I'm sort of asking ahead of time, sorry. But when we talk about dining areas, it's in the definition section. So I think, I think the dining areas include the unenclosed area. So we're talking about Skipolini's or Moretti's Deck areas and whatnot. But then there's an exception that talks about how if the area is not used 100% of the, of the open hours for access by general public, then it would not be a dining area, and then you would be able to use it for smoking. So I'm wondering if we're-
This is for private restaurants, so essentially the country club would not fall under this provision for their dining area.
Right, but what about like Moretti's Deck or Skipolini's Deck area?
That would still fall under, as a public, a public place, under the definition section.
So it would be more than just a dining area then?
Right.
Right, okay. Okay, so my only consideration there is that, you know, if you have a, one of these types of dining areas and then they're open only seven out of eight hour, operating hours, then they would essentially be able to avoid that and you could smoke there, in other words. Because it requires not to be open to the general public during all operating hours, so that's all. I think that's it for me, question-wise.
Did you want to respond to that?
Must have been a good question.
Maybe I can pile on with an additional question.
Stump the judges.
Because it's related.
Maybe we can propose some language after public comment's taken, so we can-
Because I think our intent is to cover the dining area-
Right, you don't want them to be excluded.
Regardless of how many hours it's open, yeah, okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to pile on here. Basically, when I go back to, and the page isn't numbered, so I can't tell you. Under the, after we follow the definitions, we talk about 8.14.050, the prohibition and the locations, 040 and 050. Basically, as I read all of these sentences, it says to me that the entire downtown is off limits. When you put them all together, there's no place in downtown, period, where smoking is allowed. I just want to clarify if that's the intent.
That is not the intent, no.
But that's the effect. If you go out to the center line of Main Street to get outside the park, then are you suggesting that the only place that, between Moretti's and the park that you can smoke is in the street?
There, I mean, you could actually go out onto the sidewalk in front of the dentist's office. And, you know, most of, just because there's a buffer around Main Street-
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking that is because you talk about, you say, prohibited in all unenclosed areas owned or leased by the city, including city parks, trails, recreation areas, parking lots, corporation yards, and the grounds of any building owned or leased by the city. That means streets, that means sidewalks, that means the corral. You know, I don't see how you make this work with any place because private property is going to be private property. And then the dining establishments are considered public. And I'm not seeing how there's any place in downtown that's legal. Because we have narrow streets, and even then it would be the middle of the street, and it's a city-owned street, so I guess I'm perplexed. I just want to know what we're intending. If we're intending to ban smoking in all of downtown, we should say that.
That wasn't the intent of the ordinance. For instance, the Clayton Club is, you know, right across the street.
Is it not a public place?
It wouldn't, it would be exempted from the ordinance, so they could still smoke on the back deck, still smoking the front of their-
But Skipolini's Deck you can't because it's public?
It's a dining area, that's different.
Well, they have a dining area in the back of the Clayton Club, too.
Is there food served actually at the Clayton Club?
Occasionally, but the owner is in the audience, I'll let him speak.
Because the distinction was with restaurants, that they derive most of their gross receipts from food and not from alcohol, where the Clayton Club is designated as a bar, therefore would not be captured under the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just, I'd like a map that shows what's covered. I think that's what I need to make sure I know what's legal and what's not. Because when we, Jim's right, we get down to the concerts, my initial thought was, okay, we'll send them across to the corral. But that's a city-owned park. So do we exempt it or not? I don't know. I don't, I don't know where to send them. I don't, I don't know where to send them.
So you want to give forces cancer?
I, I want to know what's legal and what's not. Since I get to be the enforcer a lot of the time.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd like a map. And, you know, I'm not quite ready to vote on this tonight.
Okay. And I have a clarification question. We are prohibiting smoking in unenclosed areas, but we're limiting it to the dining areas, recreational areas, public events, and all areas within 25 feet. So there are sections in town that are unenclosed. It's, smoking still will be legal, basically. Such as the Clayton Club being the patio.
Correct.
Okay.
On private property.
Yeah. All right. Well...
Might boost business at the Clayton Club if it's the only place that somebody can go have a cigarette.
Yeah. So this isn't including that now.
Okay.
Is that all the questions end up staff at this time? Okay. I will be opening this up to public comment. I have three speaker cards. First, from Bruce George.
Mr. Mayor, you opened for public comment, but you, it's officially open for public hearing, I believe.
Public hearing? And the public comment section of the public hearing. Thank you.
I'm from a state of confusion, you're not helping. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like a definition of multifamily units. What does multifamily unit mean to this ordinance? Is it condominiums? Is it apartments? Is it townhomes? What is a multifamily unit by definition? The reason I ask is, I live in a townhome. There is a huge difference between townhomes and condominiums. I'm also a cancer survivor, so for the most part, I support anything that's going to keep me from inhaling somebody else's garbage. Having said that, unfortunately smokers have rights. In a townhome, you own the dirt, you own the building. In theory, you can take that building, pick it up, put it on another parcel of property, and it's going to be freestanding. You have a front wall, you have a back wall, you have a left wall, and you have a right wall. And you have the fire assemblies in between. Your property line basically is between your left wall and your neighbor's right wall. There's a minimum one chair space in there. Your property line is in that one chair space. Condominiums, you own the paint on the wall, and you own the air. You do not own the property. And that makes a huge difference. And that's why I'm asking for a definition of multifamily. Because if you take this and apply it to townhomes, you are infringing on the rights of smokers, who we all have our own personal opinions of. I live next door to a smoker, and it drives me nuts when they sit on the front porch, the air currents take it down into my garage, and if my front window is open, into our kitchen area. If they smoke out back, the air currents back there take it in our master bedroom bath window, which we leave open, and in the nice weather, we leave the master bedroom window open. Now, the air currents, I can't do anything about. And as I said, I don't want to smell anybody else's garbage. So if we had a definition of multifamily units, in its truest form, it would exclude townhomes. Having said that, the public areas could be worded as such to include the townhome rear yards. There is not a rear yard in our community that is not less than 25 feet, or more than 25 feet, from an adjacent home that has openings. You know, it could be a door, could be a patio door, could be a window. That's vertically, horizontally, and diagonally. There may be one or two exceptions to that if it's an N-unit and they only have it on one side of neighbors. My time is up. Anyhow, I would like to see something concrete in definition. Townhomes interiors should be excluded, the exteriors should be included, and that's a matter for the legal deagles to figure out how to get that incorporated, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Next up, William Cullen.
Good evening, Mayor, members from the council and staff. I'm William Cullen, I'm part of the Contra Costa Tobacco Prevention Coalition. I'm also an advocate from Money Man Impact. I work in Concord. We have been doing this job since a really long time. And I'm here to express my support and the support from the coalition to help you with all the information that we already passed in, across the county. And we are still working with the other cities like such Concord, San Pablo, Richmond, and now Clayton. To clarify that kind of questions with our research will be helpful if our research could, like, help you building that. My point is that, as a person, I would like to tell you that passing this ordinance will be really important for our children. Because I got a niece, and my niece, she got, when she was three, she got asthma. And talked to her, he said, like, if my sister and my brother-in-law, they were smokers, and if they smoked like a lot, and they say, no. The thing is that she got asthma because they were living in apartments, and the guy like upstairs, he smoked like the whole day. So through the secondhand smoke, she got that illness. And so far, she's now a teenager, she is 18 years old, and she has like this illness, she cannot breathe, she cannot do like anything else because she, she was surrounded by smoke. So my point is that, as a community member, I'm really concerned about the, to create a healthier community, and that includes the city of Clayton, which I live pretty close to there. And yeah, like, any, anything that we can help to support this ordinance, we will do it, we will be happy to do it. I'm not saying, like, do not smoke, the smokers have, they have the right, but think about the community, the elder people, people that are already ill, children especially, that they go to the public areas. I don't want to expose my children in a public area and that he can, like, be seen again at certain times, especially because this city is, it's small, and we like go to those places. We go to Skipolini's, we go to downtown. And I understand in front of you that there are some people that we need to put, like, this is the smoking area. But think also about the ones that they don't have that voice here tonight, like children, and also about the how and low income, we all have rights. So that's my point. And thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Richard Haley.
Good evening. Go Broncos. Actually, I share a lot with the first speaker up here, as we live in the same development. We're both cancer survivors, but I have a slightly different spin on the question of multiple-family housing. The existence of a roof-to-ground wall does not alter the proximity, which is really the issue there. One window to the next window, one door to the next window, the incursion's going to be the same. What comes through the wall supposedly is of long duration happening and, and probably not worth worrying about if we can deal with a larger issue up front. Okay? So I think we do need to work on the definition of what a multiple-family housing unit is so that we do probably include, at least within our consideration, what a townhome is versus a condo or a co-op or any of the other variety of things that are cheek to jowl, one family to the next. One short thing, piling on with Councilwoman Pierce, I noticed that with regard to cigar lounges and smoking shops, the preclusion of sale of, or consumption of food or liquor on premises. Most cigar lounges actually survive on being able to sell wine and people bringing in food. So it seemed to be a part of the ordinance aimed at actually excluding one from ever happening in Clayton. And the last thing our downtown needs is another business that can't operate in it because of something that was done with the best of motives, say 10 or 15, 20 years ago. So I think we need to consider where food and beverage fits into this thing a little bit more clearly than we have so far. There's a good first shot at it, but I think we need to look a little deeper into issues of, A, where are the boundary conditions in terms of co-ops, condominiums, townhomes, PUDs of all sorts, and the question of where food and beverage really works into this thing. So thank you.
I have a question. Are you trying to draw a distinction that you don't want it in townhomes and you do want it in condos or vice versa?
What I'm saying is we don't address the primary reason for the ordinance if we're only dealing, that we carve out a chunk for PUDs with ceiling from roof to floor divisions as being separate from other housing that is just as tight, or is, we're to some degree, defeating the purpose of the ordinance in terms of controlling smoke within those environments. And I'm sorry, we do not have General Dynamics quality air scrubbers on our houses, even if we have a townhome. So incursion is going to happen if people are living that close together, regardless of the quality of the wall between the individual units. So the idea that these houses are infinitely tight to air is a fiction. So it's really proximity is the issue. Okay. So anyway, more thoughts needed, I think.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else wish to address? Mr. Barton?
Yes, I didn't turn.
Okay, you can turn that in.
I handed it to you now.
Okay.
My name is Steve Barton, and the practical information is I'm the owner of the Clayton Club. I'm a Clayton resident. I'm a non-smoker for, since the early 80s. I applaud the efforts by the council and city staff in generating an ordinance that's going to clarify this for everyone. I've been hoping there'd be an ordinance come along ever since vaping came around. So everyone's got their opinions on how it should work, but I, I do have a concern about making allowances for customers who do smoke to have an area they can go to without leaving the city. And I've heard different interpretations of this. You know, if you read it strictly, I, you, I read the same thing that Julie read. But that I did see in the newspaper, there was an intention to allow smoking in designated areas for, for businesses that would, that would allow it. The interpretation I would make to my patiaries, people do consume drinks there, and that's considered dining, according to one of the definitions in here. I'm keenly interested in having, being able to designate a clearly understood smoking area that meets the regulations as, I hope they're intended. And I think if I were the only business that would benefit from that, it worries me that other people with patios and backyards are outdoor, service, I'm reluctant to use a word that's been defined already, outdoor areas where people congregate. I think that every business that has, you know, a social atmosphere needs to be able to have an area they can designate to send people to. It's not clear from the ordinance that sidewalks are excluded, although I heard you say that they're excluded by state law. It's not clear from that because I assume that everything from the minute you walk out my front door to, and hit the sidewalk until you get to the next person's property was public property, was city property. I would like to see people be able to walk down the street when there is an affair or some other rule that would prevent it, be able to have a cigarette if they choose to. And I, you know, I, I think it's great to designate large non-smoking areas like this so people can congregate that don't want to be around smoke. So if I have a pitch to make, it's that I have a clearly defined smoking area where I can send people. I'm happy to put whatever signs are required to make that happen. I'd like to know if they can smoke in the back or if they can also smoke on the sidewalk in front of my property. So it's time for me to wrap up, but I agree, we need another map. And when it comes down to the ordinance being passed, I would welcome working with the community development director in defining where my signs ought to be. And lastly, if I could say one more thing, I think the verbiage on the signs need to be something that's crafted by the city so that it's not subject to interpretation. I'm not explaining why it says this to anyone. I don't want to be interpreting the law. I want to be showing people what the rule is, and then we can all live with it in a clear, concise way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it up to the council for discussion. A number of questions been raised.
Well, Mindy, if you look at Section K, it defines multi-unit residents, and I think maybe we were getting confused because you're, there was one part where it said multifamily. But multifamily is supposed to mean multi-unit, correct? And actually, that's what's in the ordinance, not multifamily.
Correct. It's multi-unit residents, that's the official vernacular in the ordinance.
And that includes and is defined, if you guys look at Section K, it defines townhomes, duplexes, apartments, condos, complex.
That was my understanding.
What's that?
That was my understanding.
So, yeah, I mean, if you, I think we've got copies back there, right? Of, I mean, it, it pretty much is the kitchen sink, right? I mean, you, you included any multi-unit residents there.
The problem with that, may I?
That would be up, Mayor, can he come back up and...
He's, he's going to speak. It's up to the man.
Yeah. Okay. Come on, come forward.
The problem with that...
We're trying to speak into microphone.
We're trying to capture the discussion for anyone else looking at this now or later.
The problem with that approach is you are taking away what people have purchased by not allowing them to degrade their own interior units or homes. I'm all for a blanket thing. However, I'm more for people's rights. And to lump townhomes in with condominiums, you're comparing apples to oranges. Many people make that mistake. And having been a building inspector, there are two completely distinct, separate areas of housing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Done, Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
Okay.
I would also agree with Julie that I would like a map because at the prior meeting, we had discussions about the fact, where would Maresi's put it? And they would kind of go around and do the thing. Where would Laveranda put it? So I think, I think we do need to, because clearly the intent is that owners like Steve and Ed, that they have a place, because otherwise they're going to lose business and people that won't come down there. So clearly, that's not the intent. A map would help clarify that, and I think that's something that I would also require.
As well as signage, explaining the intent as well.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Catalano?
Yeah, I think, so I think I've just said a couple of my comments already in the, what I'd like to look at is the common area exception and the multi-units. And then, I do have another one, I forgot to ask. There's another one that says that you can't have vending machines that distribute tobacco products. I think we're sort of intending to have, you know, you don't have a standalone vending machine somewhere on Main Street. But I mean, do Safeway and other businesses, do they have vending machines? Do they sell cigarettes in that manner?
They currently don't because they're essentially unmonitored. So somebody under the age of 21, which is this new smoking age in California, could conceivably go up and purchase either cannabis or tobacco from one of those if they were to be allowed.
So it's an age thing, monitoring?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Other comments? Julie?
Yeah. And as a lifetime non-smoker and someone who is extremely bothered by secondhand smoke, I, I get it. I totally... I totally get it. But also having some close friends who just cannot kick it, I hate to kick them out of our society and not make allowances for them. So that's why I'm concerned that they would feel banned from social activities in our downtown. And I think that would be a horrible precedent to set. There's got to be some place we could find. And if everything winds up being either the middle of the street or a sidewalk off on, you know, the far reaches, the way it reads now, sidewalks are public property, so I don't, I don't know how that works. And, and I'm, I'm really concerned that we would be, well, we don't want anyone's health harmed, but we have to think about the rights of the rest of our community as well. And, and I don't want to force people to decide between coming to a concert and whether they can have a cigarette. I mean, that's just, that's not fair. And so I think there's got to be a solution in here somewhere. I don't know what it is. But I think we need to do some more thinking on it. Because I thoroughly understand the intent to protect people's health. I also will say, by way of the discussion that happened at the podium here, earlier, in my previous home, I lived on a, in a house that was a zero-lot line. And my next-door neighbor was 15 feet away. And he smoked outside, every night at 11 o'clock, like clockwork before he went to bed. He wouldn't smoke in his house. That wasn't allowed by the matron of the household. So he smoked outside, about 15 feet from my bedroom window. And, you know, it got to be really annoying, and I would make a loud display usually of slamming my window when he went out to smoke. Then I had a discussion with him, and he went around to the other side to smoke instead, where it was a little further away, I could still smell it, but it wasn't nearly so bad. So I get it. And, and I don't think that you're going to solve everything by just saying multi-family. But it, it gets better. I mean, it's, it's easier, and I think the biggest thing is to talk to your neighbors, so. That doesn't always work, I understand, but we've got to find a solution for downtown.
I concur with that, because I understand the goal here to eliminate second-hand smoke and all that. And, but yet you have the other people that have the rights, and like Julie says, we have longtime residents who come to our concerts every weekend faithfully. And then they migrate over to that tree and that little area and have a cigarette at the appropriate time when they wish to. I don't know how we handle that. And that's why I agree that we need to have some clarification of that. Because that's going to be an ongoing issue every time we have a concert downtown. And they're about ready to start in May.
All right. Well, I think I heard the overall intent and desire from the council certainly is to achieve a balance here. Trying to protect those that don't want to be subjected to second-hand smoke and firsthand smoke. And also to protect as much as possible the right of the smoker to smoke, and to know where they can go to exercise that right. So it appears that there is some more work necessary here, so that we can clarify where we can send people that do desire to smoke, and not drive them away from our city. We want to bring people together, not drive them apart. So it does appear that there's more work, some questions need to be answered, and clarification. Has staff received enough direction on what's to be worked on?
I'll let them answer, but in terms of process, Mr. Mayor, since it was a public hearing, notice when you're done, the appropriate motion, and maybe allow us 30 days to wrap our arms around this. So to continue the public hearing to the meeting of April 17th.
So moved.
Second.
That's okay, you can still have discussion.
Sounds like, sounds like discussion isn't needed. Got a motion and a second to let you go and go away and work for 30 days, and to come back with some additional language that might solve some of these issues. So I would continue this to April 17th? Continue the public hearing? Is that sufficient direction then?
Yes, that, we have sufficient direction.
Okay, so again, this public hearing will be continued to April 17th. Next item, we have no other action items, we have no council, well, excuse me, do we have any council items that you'd like to bring up at a future meeting? Seeing then, then, and we do not have a closed session this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 3rd. Thank you for coming.